To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zamfordino.
Here.
The minutes for the meeting that was held on August 6, 2018, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second? We've been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Hey, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes, distributed to you prior to the meeting was the financial budget summary report for the month of July 2018. And I also have a couple of applications for new liquor permits. Class C-1, C-2 for Rosita's Latin Market, doing business as Rosita's Latin Market located at 1414 East Worcester Street. And then also a D-5-I for Ninja Hibachi Sushi Steakhouse at 1080 South Main Street. And check of the records was requested, received from the police department, and that information was passed on to you in an email, and otherwise I will process them as normal. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. Mayor Edwards, we have any special recognitions this evening? Thank you. So we will move on to lobby visitation. Kay, has anybody registered for lobby visitation this evening?
No, sir.
Very good. We will quickly then move on to our introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
In the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018. And a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Thank you, Bruce.
I have three ordinances from the Public Utility Committee. An ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for repairs to the solids handling and maintenance building at the water pollution control facility. An ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to execute a real estate purchase agreement for approximately 1.57 acres of land near 315 and 325 North Grove Street. And finally, an ordinance amending and adopting Chapter 98 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding streets, sidewalks, and rights-of-way management.
Mr. President.
Mr. Zamfordino.
From the Transportation and Safety Committee, we have a resolution adopting the Bowling Green Fire Division standards of cover for 2018.
Thank you, John.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
From the Community Improvement Committee, I have a resolution amending the preamble of the Charter of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
Thank you, Daniel. Moving to our official reports, Mayor Edwards.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council, and all assembled. First, I want to thank you, Mr. President, for pinch hitting for me last week for our annual stay at Lakeside. It was delightful.
Good. That's very good.
But I did keep in touch, thanks to laptops and so forth there. So then with Lori and Joe and others, very, very helpful. I just want to mention that this Friday at noon, President Rogers and I will be doing something that we've been doing for the last six years, this will be the seventh year of doing it, of walking the neighborhoods there on the east side. And we know that this year, thanks to the university and cooperation of the city and so forth, we have fewer houses to worry about right there on East Worcester Street, and that's certainly good news. But I do hope that this year, we've been doing it the last couple of years, getting off on some of the side streets. I hope we might add to that a little bit. And I don't mind the walking one bit, but I was getting some resistance last year, saying, oh, no, let's, it's too warm. No, no. But we were really moving along there, and it's an interesting process. There's always a few surprise looks, and most people are pretty warm in their reception. And they understand why we're doing this. And I think it's an important thing to do, and I'm so grateful to Rodney Rogers, our new university president, for his willingness to continue this pattern of walking the neighborhoods there on the east side and distributing a one-page letter, a very thoughtful letter that with both of our signatures, just simply reminding people about what it takes to be a good neighbor and what we would anticipate and hope in terms of good behavior in the neighborhoods and respecting the rights of others and the living conditions of others and that. So, but in any event, that'll take place this Friday at noon. That really concludes my report, unless you have questions for me. I just want to say that just before, I thought your, the presentation tonight by Lori and staff and Joe and Brian all pitching in there was a complete picture. And I've been through this several times. I appreciate the many considerations before you. Sometimes it lends itself to, I don't want to say simplistic thinking, but I'm always intrigued by how other communities have figured this out and what we can learn from them and that. And I know that each situation is entirely different than that. But the staff has put a lot of time and effort into this when working with Mary Henkelman and the downtown Bowling Green Board of Directors and the CID directors, and having individual conferences and reaching out to the small groups and doing everything they possibly can to receive input. So I thought the package presented to you tonight was, really presented a very, very complete picture. I'm sure there, you can always find something that might be added to it or reinforced or clarified, but basically you have a lot of good information before you, for the decision process. And I won't weigh in on my recommendations right now, but in any event, I just thought it was an outstanding effort there.
I agree. Thank you. Other questions for Mayor Edwards? Thank you. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter. Are there questions for Lori?
Your cellphone off.
Thank you, Lori. I second the mayor's comments about the professionalism of the presentation. Thank you for that, Joe. I know that you were heavily involved in that, and Brian Bishong, but yes, thank you very much. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor. Questions for Heather. Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
Very quick, I literally just have two things, so, and fortunately I didn't get tripped on the way up here. Just want to remind people that there's one member of the audience that I'm sure is acutely aware, but school begins this week. City schools start Wednesday, I believe some schools start tomorrow. So the pool is open tomorrow, regular hours, and then it is not open during the week. It will be open on the weekends, so we have two more weekends. Let's hope for very nice, hot, humid, sunny days. But in all honesty, the pool has had a great summer. We had a really, really good staff this year, and it has done well, but we'd like to close out strong. So it will be open tomorrow, as I said. The hours have changed slightly, 1:00 to 7:00, and it'll be open on the, this weekend, 1:00 to 7:00, and then Labor Day weekend, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, 1:00 to 7:00. So the hours change a little bit. When school starts, we tend to lose the staff that we have to have there as well. So kind of important to have lifeguards in attendance there. And the only other thing I have is from the Bicycle Safety Commission. If you have not received one of these, I'm going to hand it out, just another example of some of the education we've been doing. And this was drawn actually by our middle school representative, and it says, "Have one, wear it." If you don't get one, and there's a picture of a helmet, so. And that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Other questions for Kristen? Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh? Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell. Other questions for Brian? Thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
You got too much going on to dodge us this week.
Manville Avenue has been, you know, tore up most of the summer and look to be that paved soon and have it wrapped up shortly after Labor Day. A lot of the concrete work is done, a lot of the curbs work has been done, so we'll get that milled and get that paved. Connyot Sewer Pump Station Project, looking to start laying the gravity sewer after Labor Day. Still doing some minor tweaks to the pump station itself. That has to be up and running before you can lay the gravity sewer. Of course, Columbia Gas is working downtown and had several crews in doing that, and right now it looks like they'll be working through the end of September, maybe even early October. And yet, another project, the Roundabout, Southeast Worcester. We had a preconstruction meeting last week. The biggest thing I want people to realize is this is an ODOT project, so if they have any questions, we're going to defer most of that to ODOT. We will have staff present during major portions of that project, so we can make sure our infrastructure is taken care of properly. And they've already got some barrels out there. The first thing I have to do is establish a pedestrian crossing on the south side of the overpass, but it really will pick up in earnest after Labor Day. And they're aware of the university football game schedules and all that depends that the university, university has been involved in the preconstruction meetings, and they'll be going to the, every two weeks we're going to have a progress meeting, they'll be going to those as well. So that project will be lasting pretty much over the winter, laying some sewer and water lines on that, what I call the Doitt Perry Corner, right across Melzerapee. The water and sewer lines get reestablished there. That'll happen over the winter, and even goes under I-75. And the completion should be in July of 19. So there'll be a lot of action all around town for a year-plus. That's my report. Hope that's good news.
It is.
I want to say I think that in spite of everything that was going on this weekend with the tractor pole and construction on Main Street and firefly nights and other community activities, traffic moved well in Bowling Green. There just were no serious problems that I saw, and I was out and about doing things all weekend, but I think we've really got that tractor pole traffic figured out once and for all.
Yeah, and the nice thing is it's a lot of the same people coming back every year, so they kind of know what we want them to do, too.
Yeah.
And then, of course, this week we got the move-in and soccer challenge and...
We get to do it all over again this weekend.
All that stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Brian, a couple of questions on an ordinance we have for rights-of-way management, Chapter 98 stuff. Could have asked O'Connell, but I noticed Public Works mentioned more in the ordinance.
I know. I don't want that to happen.
So basically, three questions about cost, safety, and quantity of projects. So if I understand correctly, we used to get a lot of these costs covered through a franchise fee we were able to impose on service providers, and it seemed like it was in the tune of $200,000 or maybe it was more? You know what I'm talking about there, Brian? Yeah, yeah.
To the microphone, Brian, please. Thank you.
The cable TV franchise had gone away, but it's been replaced, so that was good news. So that's kind of a revenue-neutral item.
How's it been replaced?
It was replaced with video service fee.
Is that related to this Chapter 98 stuff, or is that totally unrelated?
I don't think it's related to that.
Oh, okay. All right, so that's it for that? So, but part of the discussion in the ordinance was about establishing appropriate fees, so is that something we've been doing for a long time, and I'm just confusing it?
Well, this is kind of a lot of new stuff, and it's related to the legal work created out of the state, or mostly for telecommunications sort of things that come in. We've always had our permits that are in place for when somebody wants to do a sidewalk, driveway, sewer, build a new house, that sort of thing. These are more geared towards our review, the costs associated with, let's say, a telecommunications company want to put in, like these mini cell towers they've been putting in, and then how we can control. And really, a lot of it was, we have to follow the rules provided us, so we just didn't have any of this in our language. So we, Joe spent a lot of time going over this, and Brian O'Connell, mostly Joe, kind of getting these things accustomed to our ordinances, so rather, and it's rather complex, and I do admit Public Works is in their way too much, but that's where they're going to start. They're going to come in and see me and get the permit, and then we have to do a review with our electric department, and if they are attaching onto one of our poles or they're setting a foreign pole, all that stuff will get reviewed. And there's, I believe there's a minimum fee of like $250. I think we can establish for review, that sort of thing, so.
And I guess on the safety aspect, we have lots of controls on that. They can't just come in and willy-nilly put up whatever they want on any poles or any building.
Yeah, and there's talk about where you can, and you have to put up, we think the downtown's pretty safe, but there's things where we can require, like they have done on Main Street, where we have the more decorative streetlights up on the north end. They had to match poles, they just can't plop a wood pole in there. So try to blend in, so to speak, and try to conform to what we want them to do. We haven't really had any in a while, but it's been a challenge.
Do you anticipate a lot of additional items to be placed on poles and buildings? Is this going to be a problem for us or not especially?
Hard to say. I think all this is trying to do is get us ready for if that happens. We have our rules in place, so we can supply the vendor who's going to do that. So we hopefully don't have a lot of it, but I would say it's really a byproduct of everybody using, you know, their smartphones and the wireless technology and all that, so it's, it seems to be the trend would be more, but I can't say for sure.
Thank you.
Brian, I have a question for you, and it's related to Columbia Gas work. First of all, I would say that I know there's been a lot of effort, time and effort spent communicating with Columbia Gas and city representatives and business representatives. It's pretty invasive work, and I know it's difficult, and I think that for the most part, it's going really well. My question is related to pavement replacement following behind the new piping installation. I know that there is a significant portion of the work is contained in an area that is going to be repaved next year after additional underground utility work. So I would expect that the pavement repair that's going to occur in those areas is going to be held to perhaps a lesser standard than work that's being performed in areas where there is not going to be new paving work following behind in very close proximity to that work. You get where I'm at right now?
You're 100% correct.
Okay. So my question is, frankly, I'm a little bit concerned about the quality of the paving replacement or surface replacement that's going to occur in those areas that we are not going to be repaving shortly thereafter.
We already told them to tear it out and do it again, so, yeah.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, you know, there have been, they've been here now, this is the third year, and there was work in Ward III and work in Ward I previous years where, quite honestly, I don't feel like the pavement was replaced in a standard that, you know, we would find acceptable. And it's had a negative impact on a number of our streets. And I just think that, you know, this is an opportunity in the context of this project to really reinforce to them, you know, what the standard is, what's acceptable for permanent replacement once they complete their work. And I know you talk with them about that, and it's difficult, but to me, it's really important, because again, I mentioned in other areas of the city, it's had a negative impact that we feel to this day.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, down in John's neighborhood, those streets, they weren't great to begin with, but anytime you run a trench and then you run laterals to all the surfaces, it really, it was really, short of repaving it, it does bring a negative quality to the pavement. Downtown, the, kind of the demarcation point is pretty much right in front of the senior center. Senior Center North will be not part of our paving project, and they've paved that trench, and it's not to our satisfaction, they're going to have to redo that. And even the part south of the senior center that will be coal patch on top, they're having to repour the concrete base to match the existing base, and it gets pinned into the other base, so when you get a freeze saw, it's all tied together. So even though it may look rough on the top and the heart of the downtown, the concrete base has been poured back. Then when we get done doing our water and sewer project, our trenches will look much the same way until the contractor comes in and mills it off and repaves it. So I hear you, and I agree, and we've been on them about their permanent trench, because, and this is a different subcontractor that's worked here before, so I think they're asserting our...
So just confirm, as part of their contract or part of their obligation, they are required to replace the pavement either matching or exceeding the condition of the pavement before they begin their work.
That's correct.
Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the hard part downtown is the concrete pavement isn't as thick as today's standards, so it's a little bit tough to repen a lot of that together. It's maybe about four or five inches thick, where nowadays it'd be six to eight inches thick. And it's been chopped up through various projects, even some of our own, so sometimes it's hard to find a good section to pin it into, but they're doing the best they can. And then I think when the paving is all done after our project, I think the riding surface will be much better, and the pavement that we're going to use, the asphalt we're going to use is much better than we used back in the 2000s. It's just a better PG, performance grade, so, and that's what we're going to put downtown.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for Mr. Kraft?
Well, just if I understand correctly, then, even when they redo, you know, repave to the best of our satisfaction, it's, it won't be until the streets are completely repaved that it'll be a smooth, singular surface again.
Yeah. Anytime you put a utility cut in a street, I think you've compromised the rideability of the street until you come in and replane it and repave it. People say to me all the time, well, can't you just make them repave the street? And I don't believe, but under my knowledge, nor anybody, other cities have done it, where we have the ability to force them to pave the street. And I think all that's going to do is raise the cost of those projects they're doing, and they're just going to pass it along to their gas customers. So fortunately, some of the streets they've been working on aren't the newest, but they are on our short list to come back in and repave. At the same time, we repave them, a lot of those same areas have substandard ADA wheelchair ramps and curb issues. And that's why we did, when we did Church and Connyot and Fairview, a lot of those curbs got replaced in Grove because they'd just been dilapidated for so long. And then when you do the ADA ramps, now's the time to bring all that up to code, but it is expensive.
Great.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks.
Thank you. That completes our official reports. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
We had a Finance Committee meeting tonight to discuss parking, and we had, we heard from staff, got a nice report. I think we all have it on our, in front of us now, so... The proposal we had for, that we already had first reading for was to raise all the fees by 100%, and that's just, will just kind of keep us steady for a few years. It's not necessarily a permanent solution. If we, if we were all confident that we wanted to just do that, we probably would not need to have another committee meeting. But knowing my tendency to want to do things a little too fast compared to other people that are maybe a little too thorough, I'm probably going to try to err a little bit on the side of being a little more thorough than I might want to. So I think we probably better go ahead and schedule another committee hearing. That sound right to you, Mr. Osbacher?
It does. Now that we, I'd just throw out for your consideration, now that we've gone through the initial presentation, and there have been a couple of requests for follow-up information, I'm wondering if you might consider making the next meeting a committee, the whole meeting, as opposed to a finance meeting in order to allow all members of council to potentially weigh in on information that we get?
I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
Greg, you have any thoughts on procedure there?
No, I think that's a good idea as well. I really want to, just building on that, I'd really like to hear more about a renewed effort for shared cost on this, right? The one thing that I got out of the entire committee meeting, the key point made to me, there was a disconnect with the business community on what that whole shared cost option is, was, could be. And I think what I heard is there's an opportunity at least to revisit that. And I'd like you to figure out a way to revisit before we make any decision.
If I may ask Lori, and it's fine if you don't have an answer on this, on Greg's point, it, we've only thought about, until tonight, I only thought about charging property owners a fee. Is it possible to charge the business operators a fee directly?
I don't think so. It has to go on the property assessment. So it would have to be tied to a property. Now, what they work out between themselves, of course, would be a matter for private business. The other assessment option is you could assess everybody in town as well, an assessment.
Right, right.
That's your other assessment option.
Right.
If you want to go that route. And we are glad to, you know, dust that off, it was from last summer, and put that in presentation form for you for when you'd like to consider it.
Okay.
Or is it reasonable to expect that we, that you would be in position to present on, at our neck, before our next meeting on September 4?
Yes, we could do that. Right, Joe?
Just throwing it out there, feel free to...
Wait, is that your cellphone ringing, Joe? Yes, we'd be glad to do that.
It's fine if you need a month's time.
But you have a meeting before the meeting on the 4th to talk about cap priorities. That's correct. Or you have sex at 6 o'clock.
Well, possibly not.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a schedule that's in flux here, so we can work all of that out right now.
Yeah. Well, and I'll intervene with a brief update from Planning, planning, economic development committee. And after looking at Lori's report and studying the progress of the implementation plan and where we're at, I think it's prudent to postpone my adjusted meeting until taking a harder look at the projects that go on. And to a date to be determined. I would like to continue that process and establish new priorities, but I think I picked the date too soon, given where we are in the process. I will formally withdraw that request for meeting on the 4th, and be rescheduled at a date to be determined. So that opens the fourth back.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's domino number one.
Right.
So...
Yeah, so I'd like to request a committee of the whole then for September 4 at 6 o'clock to discuss parking.
And then, Kay, I would also like to request, following the, that committee of the whole meeting, we will continue and do a second committee of the whole meeting at 6:45 to discuss the firefly event liquor permit application. So we'll, we'll two birds with one stone then.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Excellent. Are there any council, other council committee reports? Okay, we are moving on to the reading of legislation. Kay.
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3707 for first reading. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Resolution number 3708 for first reading. Resolution adopting the Bowling Green Fire Division standards of cover for 2018. Resolution number 3709 for first reading. Resolution amending the preamble of the Charter of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio. Ordinance number 8707 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018 and ending December 31, 2018.
Mr. President. Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we give ordinance 8707 at second and third reading.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zamfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes. The motion passes. The rules are suspended for ordinance 8707.
Ordinance number 8707 for second and third reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018 and ending December 31, 2018.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8707.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Ospaker?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8707 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8708 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for repairs to the solids handling and maintenance building at the water pollution control facility. Ordinance number 8709 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to execute a real estate purchase agreement for approximately 1.57 acres of land near 315 and 325 North Grove Street. Ordinance number 8710 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Chapter 98 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding streets, sidewalks, and rights of way management. Legislation for second reading. Ordinance number 8704 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 76.23 CA, ND, and Section 76.24 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding operation of meters, coins deposit, and time mechanism and parking time limits and amending and adopting Section 35.70 regarding city fees and fees charged for services. Ordinance number 8705 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 150.102B, Section 150.104A, and Section 151.17A of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding zoning code fees. Ordinance number 8706 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 70.35B1 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding police tow list and establishment of fees. And there is no legislation for third reading.
Thank you, Kay. That completes the items that are on our agenda. Is there any other business to come before council? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? It's moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. Motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.